Welcome everybody, I'd like to call the Public School Board to order. And the first order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. So will you join me in Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and this republic where we just stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to add the nomination of Michael Tenters to the consent agenda.
I would like to add the following individuals for voluntary transfers. Starting July 1, Andrew LaCore. Jenny Mopouskas. Michelle Blaze. Carrie Swift. And Rizetano. Kevin McCallum. Charlotte Elwell. To the consent agenda for voluntary transfers within CHS JR.
Thank you Patty. Are there any other changes? Okay. Move on to public comments one. Did you want to go over how people can make their public comments?
Alright, so this is Nicholas Handy right here. I'm the Communications Coordinator and School Board Secretary. If you would like to make a public comment tonight, please just use your hand raise feature via Zoom. So that should be right at the bottom of the screen for you. Then you would just say first name, last name, and your town of residence. And then you can go from there. Alright, I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, so let's move on with the agenda. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So you have the written report. I'll just briefly touch on a few items. One is that this week is the first week we will be going back to or planning to go back for five days in person for those individuals who have selected that learning environment. And all of the schools have made sure that they got their schedules in a, in good order to make sure that that could happen. So thank you to the teachers, the administrators, who worked on these in a collaborative way at the secondary level, and I believe so at the elementary level, to make certain that we got everything done just the way we needed to in order to make this happen in a very quick manner. Other items that are related to this, the governor, Sununu, last week chose to not renew the executive order on mask wearing. And so there certainly was some chatter about that, really, in probably most schools. And so we sent out a letter or an email last week, just letting people know that this is still our policy. This is something that we, as with anything else that has changed from the CDC to the governor's orders to even just some internal data that we've looked at. We've had regular conversations throughout this entire year here at this board level to discuss, make changes if necessary. And so this is certainly a topic that we can have a conversation about if need be. I will say that the, when we went into this school year, we had made the plans to wear masks prior to the governor choosing to put his order in place. We are currently right now, because it's in our framework, and we've agreed to do this. We believe it's safe that we would continue on with this afterwards. If there were reasoning to not do so, no, certainly there can be more discussions down the road. But I wanted to just bring this up because it is an area where some people had some questions about the importance of mask wearing, or whether it meant when the governor said we don't need to do any more of the schools, they need to do this anymore, or anything of that nature. Testing, we talked about testing. There was a question, I believe, that one of our board members asked last time about the New Hampshire SAS testing. And when we've talked about that being in mid-May, but currently there's other testing going on in the high school. And so we have had SAT, which is for the juniors, that was taken here last Wednesday. The PSATs for our sophomores will be taking place this Wednesday. The AP exams will take place as followed, but that, right up there, you can see, that'll be the two weeks following the April break. And some of those will be online and some of them will be in person. And I would say, just to add to this, that this is kind of a step one. We haven't done the PSATs for our sophomores as a regular practice in the past. We've done it for some. People wanted to do that. Next year, we're slated to do the PS, the PSAT eight, nine, for our eighth and ninth graders, the PSAT ten for our 10th graders, both in the fall and spring. So we have data points to match up for growth purposes. And then the same thing, of course, juniors PSAT, I believe, in the fall, and then SATs in the spring. So that will be something new for next year. This year, I, you know, we'll still use MAPS testing or the NWEA. We will have some discussions about whether we want to continue doing that after next year. Because with the interim assessments that the state has, the state assessments, these right here, you know, we do need to limit the tests we use as to testing all the time. But for now, because we haven't had a streamlined system, we continue with the NWEA. And we'll likely to keep some of that at the elementary level anyway, because it's an appropriate test for the elementary schools. Architectural update, that's another big thing. We had a, I think we had a two-hour facilities meeting the other day, and we talked about a variety of things. A lot of it has to do with work that we have been doing with the Turner Group, which is an architectural engineering firm. And so there are some kind of exciting things that they've been working on. All of it is exciting in some ways. But I would say that they fall into two different areas, the kind of deferred maintenance, or just needing to improve some areas that have been neglected for a bit. That could be the outside look of the school. It could be HVAC equipment. It could be information on redoing some of our, our, let's say, our construction trades area. And so those would be more getting things up to snuff. And then there's other drawings and concepts that are not deferred maintenance and cleaning that up and getting back on track and really getting them a good rhythm. And maybe help us with, you know, long-range planning. Then there's the more proactive, let's improve the facility because we want to do it for educational purposes. So with those types of things, we are planning on getting together and we'll start to advertise this, this week, actually tomorrow. After I've had this conversation at the school board level anyway, to get a community group together. I guess you could say a committee with a broad membership to be able to look at some possibilities from all the information that we're gathering about what we could do, maybe if we think that down the road, it's a good idea, maybe sooner than later, to go out for a bond, to do something of a modest nature that would be really good to improve our schools, or a school and the educational setting that we have, and the experiences for our kids. That would be something that we want to look at, which is in some of these drawings and some of the information that we've been given. And then, of course, also HVAC, you know, we're having a lot of conversations about. And there's information that's being developed right now as we speak with, with a firm about changing our HVAC units out and when that can happen. And the board will be brought probably a proposal by the first of May to see if we want to take some action on some HVAC work. But we've asked for, from EEI, which is a group that we have previously had a performance contract with, to draw up several different plans. One would be to replace in kind with what you have. I mean, even if you're replacing kind, you improve your systems because they're all up to snuff. They're all modern. But also, you know, what would be, you know, an ideal situation? So if we didn't have the money to do all of that, but we wanted to do it over a period of time, how would that look? So just give us some choices that the board could look at as opposed to having them predetermine what they think is best for us. Because we might want to, you know, take a different approach that even though it might take longer, we might have very specific features that we want for our systems that might not be able to happen all in one summer if we just went with changing things out in kind. The information that we receive from the architectural firm would indicate that we have with our SR2 funds and what is likely to come and be able to use in SR3 funds, we have enough to replace every end-of-life unit we have at this school and at the elementary schools. The elementary schools have more modern equipment. So there's not as much to replace out there, but this place does have, right, this school in particular has more that could be used to, to be, to be improved upon. So lots of conversations about that. And some of that will be, you know, probably a facilities committee recommendation to the board. But if we do want to do something this summer, if that's even a possibility, because of lead time on equipment and so forth, we will need to act sooner than later. You know, on this. And it might not be the right time. Um. Other major items that would a group would be looking at would be bathroom upgrades, putting that into a possible bond scenario with other items. Bathroom upgrades for the purpose of just improving them, making them more sanitary. Certainly, obviously, improving the looks of them, but also making sure that we are making them a whole lot more private for all individuals. I think that you know, through the years, we've done a good job of making things a little more private and a little more private. We have a plan to really make sure that we are making all of our individuals, teachers, staff, students, anyone who enters, be able to you know, be respected, included, and also just feel safe going into bathrooms and stalls and so forth. As you're aware, in our middle school wing, we have some that have a lot of openness to it and aren't the best design. So we'll be looking at that. And we have a lot of parking lot work that is being done. Turner is also doing the architectural work on, or the engineering work on the adjacent parking lots to the existing RMS parking lot. So that's where they've cleared the trees. That's being worked on right now, because really that needs to be done prior to the paving of the the main parking lot due to the fact that drainage, if we didn't, we're gonna have, we'd have to tear up the parking lot we just put down in order to do some drainage work. We only have preliminary information on that right now. We need more, but it's a, it looks like we can get this done. So lots happening. I am sure that those individuals who joined the facilities committee for the first time went, what in the world? Because it was an impressive amount, but a lot of these things have been on the facilities committees' plates in mind for actually years. And so though this has been a a different year, we've been able to utilize some of the finances and the money and also just urgency and the, the, I would say, the loosening of some regulations that the federal government and the state government has allotted to be able to get some of these things done faster than we normally would. And it will pay off in the long run significantly. My thoughts on that. So in general, we had some educational needs and educational things that are happening from testing to being in school. And then lots of physical plant issues across all the schools that we're working with. Any questions or thoughts? Yes?
Hi Ruben, so thank you for the update on that and seems like a time of great opportunity to get a few things done, so. I mean, that's great, but as we learned from EEI last week, we're gonna have to make a fairly rapid decision and you know, hopefully we'll make the best decision we can for the school. HDAC certainly seems to be a critical item and one that fits well with the funding. Are there other items that that money, you know, might be used on that you have on your radar?
Sure. Well, first, interestingly enough, it can be used for parking lot improvements as well. We would not need to use it, it's bizarre to me. But we would not be able to, or we don't need to use it for that purpose, because we have already gone down the path of budgeting for that, getting, you know, a warrant approved for that. So we're in good shape for the work that we have planned for the summertime, funding-wise. So that's not necessarily a way to go. One other item that we are looking at, and we've already written into the, the care, the second cares of the SR2, to get started, just to see, you know, what type of approval and so forth we'll get, is synchronized, a synchronized clock system that is also an emergency alert system. And so there are multiple reasons for this. And how it relates to COVID and is, I think, you'll, I'll explain why I think it's clear that it relates to this. One, just because as we have done this year to make sure that the transitions happen properly here, that there was time for cleaning, that there was time for making sure that there were, you know, a certain number of students in the hallway at the exact same time, or not at the exact same time. To manage all those transitions and to do it effectively when we don't have a clock system where it's the same from room to room, makes it a challenge. The challenge is taken away by going on the intercom and just giving directions, and that's fine, and it worked. It interrupts the workflow significantly in different places. It interrupts classes when that happens. So if there's definitely an impact there. That's, you know, one clear kind of COVID piece about being in school and making sure that you have the opportunity down the road. Maybe we have to do this again sometime, or maybe we have to start the year off again like this. We have a different approach to making sure that we have the right type of communication that way. The other thing about this, and because I'm not as crazy about the synchronization of clocks, because I believe we all have a computer with a synchronized clock on it. And with a little work, we could do that, but the, the system that we were looking at, and that Lou and our safety coordinator and John, the facilities manager, have found is a unique is a unique product that allows for basically silent emergency communication to go within each classroom. So you can use it for drills or just for general information. I mean, you can put the school lunches, I guess, up there if you wanted to. But more specifically, in this situation of a real emergency, it is a far better approach to communicating to your rooms. One, you can do it to everyone at the same time, or you can select spaces to communicate specifically to. If you can imagine someone coming in and breaching our door here and pulling a fire alarm, and maybe that's what they want, and they want people to come on out. We could easily, without going on intercoms or anything of that nature, be able to say, hey, stay in your room. This is a, you know, this is a lockdown, significant issue. Do not move out of your room, or something to that effect. And everyone would have that instantaneously. Or if a situation occurred where you had an individual on an intercom who was under pressure due to an intruder. The same thing can happen, and you, so you can get that information out and communicate in an effective way. As the kind of rationale here for this is that, as we believe we are being told, and I think we've even experienced it a little bit to our extent, which is why we came back in person, you know, in January, because of the clear mental health situations that are going on, certainly in our own communities, but you know, everywhere else as well, right? So and when you have situations like that, there's a good reason to believe that there could be a rise in violence or erratic behavior. And so making sure that we have the best communication systems possible to mitigate that type of threat is important to us, I think. And so you can, you can kind of, you know, hopefully utilize these funds to be able to get something of that nature in our school system sooner than later. We think it would be a very good product and a very good use of funds. And accomplish a lot of things at one time. The I think some evidence of this, and I don't know, I mean, it's so tough to know what's truly happening in media nowadays. But there certainly has been a seemingly, anyway, uptick, and maybe it's been going all along, but uptick of violence. Whether it be a school shooting that took place, I think, last week in Tennessee, or a couple of situations that occurred over the weekend. So I don't think that it's a far-fetched place to go with the logic of just the fact that we know we're gonna have to be continuing to focus. And we know for years, we've been planning on this, that mental health is an important thing to focus on, and the social motion is important to focus on anyway. And so we're well on our way to making sure those systems are improving constantly, but while you're doing that, you got to make sure that you're keeping the physical place safe, the, and everyone just communicated with, and that we run our drills really well, and that's an item that I think would be important to use the money for. That would be a little bit, right now, pricing it, and we would have to go out the bid if we even got approval from the feds to use the funds for this. You'd have to go out the bid, and there are some stipulations about how you do things with federal grants, but it'd be around ninety to a hundred thousand for the entire district. Which actually isn't, we were looking into other types of alert systems a couple of years ago that were in the realm of a hundred thousand, that did do the clocks and everything else as well. And they would have been noisier.
Yes, would this be automatically tied into emergency services as well? The police station, fire station?
I think, I think we can. I mean, our, right now, they have access to all our cameras as well. So if we, we'd have, I'd have to look into that more to give you an exact answer, but I believe that was one of the features. I mean, it's all, it's all, you know, managed within the cloud and everything, so it is capable, the capability is there.
Okay, well. Does anybody have anything else, Ruben?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. That adds anything, anybody? Do you have a motion? Okay, move, we accept the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
John moved, Christine second. All in favor? I hope opposed. Motion carries. Okay. I have a presentation from General Department regarding the State of Student Services.
Alright, I'm going to patch her in right now as a panelist so that she can make the presentation.
Am I able to have a two-way conversation with somebody on Zoom? So am I able to have a two-way conversation?
Hello Jen, can you hear us?
I can, I was muted, sorry.
You hear that?
I think so, yeah. Okay, you're on Jen.
We're ready.
Ready.
Let me share my screen. Alright, so as we do regularly, here's the State of the Union for student services. Some questions that were asked, and this is, I'm, it's gonna be a little dry, a lot of data, but here we go. Right now, generally speaking, we have about 225 students with IEPs and 13 out of districts with, for a grand total, about 238 identified students in district, which is a little lower than some years. Little higher than others. We had a number of students move, and we'll, we'll, we have some slides about that, some different movement. One of the things that was asked is where we kind of fit with other districts around, around us. And so what we have here are seven districts across the state that are similar in size to us, with Manadok being the smallest and Litchfield being the largest, I think, between us. And what you, you can see that we are real close to average in our percent of identified students by district. There are two districts who are similar to us in enrollment size, who have slightly lower percentages, but we fall actually a little bit below the state average and within actually quite a lot lower than some of our, our other districts as far as our percentage of students identified. The next slide kind of breaks down our data a little bit into how many students we have by building that are identified. We're clearly very even between Ringe and Jeffrey. We have a step down into the middle school and then even fewer students in the high school, and that's definitely something we want to see, is that early intervention and supports, and those stepping down and needing less supports as, as students get a little bit older and are able to access more independently. I also added into this slide our number of out-of-district students at each level, just so you can see our, the percentage of those comparatively to our overall population being a fairly small number. Another look was just looking at it by grade, and it also shows you kind of that same early intervention, supports and services earlier on, and then the step down as we go through grade levels. Another question that was asked was about one-on-ones. How many one-on-ones do we have, and how are they kind of separated out by grade? So currently, we have 27 one-on-ones, and we anticipate, and that's those red bars, students that maybe left or are homeschooling or remote actually for the year, that when they come back, they're going, we're going to require one-on-ones back that for next year, we'll need a total of 32 and one-on-ones. So that doesn't include associates, like grade-level associates, associates supporting different programs, including behavior programs. These are the associates that are assigned directly to students per IEPs needing, needing a one-on-one. So that's kind of our, our overall number. Again, you see kind of that same trend. The K1, 2 area, typically you, you see a more supports and services, and the hope again is, is to reduce those as, as students get a little bit older depending on severity of need. One of the, the interesting things about this year, we often talk about how many kids come in and out of a district any year. But we were asked to really quantify that, and we, it took a lot more effort than we, we thought it might to, to find all of this information. But generally, we've had seven elementary students move in and eight middle or high school, including two out-of-district students, so students that were already placed out of district at placements when they moved in with us. Referral-wise, we've had 33 referrals at the elementary level, 16 of which were for preschool, and two at the middle high school level. That was of last week, and our numbers actually are higher now. For move-outs, and I'm sorry about that cursor piece right in the middle of that, but we've had nine students at the elementary level move out. And one of those was an out-of-district student. And six move out at the middle high school, one of those being an out-of-district student. So wouldn't you know that that averages out two in and two out for our out-of-district placement? For our out of district placements. The one that's interesting is that this refusal of services. So any students that chose to go to homeschooling or to private school. Would have to refuse their special ed services because they're not offered that, any students that are remote continue to receive special ed services. But students that were homeschooled or went to private schools throughout this COVID period of time. Would have to refuse services. So that, that's this category. And at the elementary level, we have fourteen. And when we look at those students, we anticipate probably twelve of those would be coming back. And at the middle high school, we have five. We anticipate really closer to one, maybe two of those more likely coming back. So it's an interesting set of numbers there. And overall our discharge, our students that no longer need supports and services at the elementary level, we've discharged two students this year. And at the middle and high school level, we've discharged three from supports and services. The last data pieces that I found, and I've had a good time making graphs. Wanted to look a little bit about our, at our budget and our actual spending on a couple of our big ticket items. So. For us in student services, transportation is a big, big ticket item with our, our budget. At about six hundred twelve thousand. And we, what we, we found is that will be about forty-four thousand, just under forty-four thousand dollars. Right side up that we will have not spent this year. And the big reason for that is our out of district students that were remote for a long period of time for. For student services, transportation, we only pay for runs when they go on the run as opposed to the. The contract that we had for the regular head bussing, I believe was a little bit different. So that's where that, that chunk of money is, is, is students that stayed remote. We have. Some kiddos that go out of district in Massachusetts and they were definitely remote much, much longer than we were. The other piece, which is a huge chunk of our money, is the out of district placements, which is about one point two million. Almost, almost one point three. And we will be about six thousand dollars. And I think that that's a darn close budget that we, we will have, will have about six thousand dollars right side up at the end of the year. Could go a little bit either way still on supports and services, but that's our. Our guess at this point or estimate based on, on what we spent and, and how things are going. So I don't know that we could have been any closer, especially with some of the changes that we've had in our out of district. Placements as, as we showed, as I showed earlier, we've had a couple out of district students move out. We've had some students, some changes from residential to day placement, which is significant. Savings and also indicative of. Growth, super great growth by students being able to really step down into a, into a less restrictive environment. So. Those are some exciting pieces that actually when we look for us to look at. I was asked to share what some of the barriers and roadblocks were, so I, I sent this out actually to the entire specialized staff. And surprisingly, I got back very few roadblocks and barriers to this year. They all kind of revolved around. Schedule changes that changes in routines and schedules are difficult for everybody, but for struggling learners, it, it often is even more. Difficult and difficult to figure out. Block scheduling at the middle and high school works really well for some kids and not for all kids. So that's been a barrier. Going back to any other kind of schedule can also be a barrier for the same purpose, same reasoning though. Teaching through a screen has been a barrier. Again, there, there've been some kids that it's really worked well for, but, but for a large degree of our student service population, it's. It's been difficult. It's hard to get interaction and to, to get that. Personal feeling. One of the big things that we had, that is, that has been a roadblock for us as dual duty teachers. We were, as was everyone else, we've been highly creative with the use of our staff. And in some instances, that has meant that our teachers have taught general head classrooms as well as being case managers and we've. We've changed case management. To support lots of different ways and that has been a heavy, heavy load for some of our staff. Generally internet inequality, which is true for everyone. And then supporting parents, one of the. One of the blocks that we had was helping to balance our schedules and having parents have kids at home and learning at home. And how we could support that. Interestingly. Are the accomplishments, when I ask for people to say, what are the greatest accomplishments? I got pages and pages and pages. So. I'll go through these pretty quickly, but just generally lots of positives when we sit and think about how this last year has gone. I talked a little bit about the out of district placements. We've had some kids really flourish and make some good growth. And, and find some really nice successes and out of district placements. We have on growing, ongoing program development. This is generally in our social emotional programs throughout the district. But it's going well and it's feeling good that we're making some steps forward. We have enhanced our collaborative teams. Including teams now include nursing and guidance, administration, outside services. And specialized in regular ed are just, are more connected in a lot of our team meetings. And team processes, which is great. One of the great things is we now have full day. Pre-K, not only at Jeffrey Grade, but also at Range Memorial School, which isn't really student services, but it has been very exciting. Learning pods, I think were a great accomplishment. I think we had about a hundred forty students. Overall participate in learning pods throughout the winter time when we did it. And what's more, it was resurrected. About a month ago to start having kids come back on Wednesdays for those at-risk learners. We were having more and more learners saying, can I come in on Wednesdays as well? And we had teachers volunteer to do learning pods. So I, I feel like that was a great, great, great success. We've had very few mask exceptions. One of our concerns in. March and as we moved on and came back in, into person was what are we going to do with mask exceptions? We've had very, very few. And we've worked really hard to work towards compliance and enhance that sensory piece for kids and it's gone well. Navigating online meetings and online learning has been really fantastic. Our, our students and our staff have made. Leaps and bounds of growth that would have in, in a typical fashion would have probably taken us years to get to. Students, young students are maneuvering through classroom and Zoom and learning how to learn that way. One of the things that staff told me is that we're truly living resiliently, that we've, we're seeing teaching, modifying, accommodating. And just really students and staff both, and I loved, loved that piece. Learners have become more independent and situational problem solvers. Which if, these are all things that are huge in our strategic design that have happened throughout this time. Relationship building both with staff and students, parents and learners has really. Grown and strengthened and solidified. I got that response over and over and over again from staff. The relationship, the connection, the commit consistency and communication between home and school has. Been so much better this year than it ever has before. Many people felt that Wednesdays were great for extra learner support in a way that we have not done or been able to do in the past. And then one of the great things that happened at the beginning of April is that our high school learners, a group of our high school learners and staff. Put together an autism awareness packet and process. And these three pictures here are. Puzzle pieces that some of our kiddos put together as well. But they also created a puzzle piece pen or a ribbon pen for every student and staff member in the entire district. To recognize autism awareness, which is the beginning of April. For staff, we've, we've had some really good ongoing PD and professional, professional development. That includes, we've had in the last two years, fifteen associates go through RBT training, which is a response behavior. Management system and training. We have had regular special ed team meetings, which allows us as a group to share information. And be more streamlined and onboard together. And we've created some onboard processing that we're still working on, but really working towards. Some better onboarding, especially for associates that get hired all throughout the school year to allow staff to be. Ready and a little bit more trained when they start than just dropping people into, into positions. Moving forward, we're super excited. Summer twenty-one will be in person in each building. Far cry from what we did last year, which was successful, but we're super excited about this year. Our programming will work closely. With the programming being provided in each building. Pep at the elementary schools and the middle high school supports. So we're excited about working together to provide the best supports for all students. And interestingly, our numbers that, that qualify for extended school year are very similar to previous years. So we, it, we feel like we've been. We've done a fairly good job at supporting kids overall to give them what they need. We do feel like we have some more kids that maybe would qualify for pep or what would, would have been best camp. For some extra supports, but as far as E S Y goes, we've, we feel pretty good about our numbers. Moving forward for our next school year, we, we hope to incorporate and those lessons and models of instruction that we found to be highly successful. We'll continue with RBT training and get more and more of our staff that, that training and responsive behavior support. We've added foundations to the preschool curriculum so that they can align that in to some degree with the. Foundations curriculum that goes up through kindergarten and early elementary school to give students a more consistent curriculum pattern and, and. Options for learning. We would, we were going to continue to develop meaningful professional development for our staff. Continue working on that onboarding process because we find that if we. Work hard at finding good staff, onboarding well and connecting with people that we keep good stuff. And then our staffing shifts, those, those pieces that we talked, that I talked about at the beginning about the dual roles will be shifting back. To their more traditional roles and working towards. That and what that will look like for, for teachers and learners. So generally just, we're just going to keep on swimming. Questions?
Okay, thank, thank you Jen. I, I think that it's important for people to. Have an opportunity to understand all the hard work and all of the effort that's put into. Our student services and. As far as I'm concerned, when we compare what, what's going on here versus other districts, I think that we're. Really doing quite well in comparison regarding not only the services that we provide. But the cost at which we do them. So I, you know, my hat's off for that. Does anybody have any questions? Comments?
Hi Jen, it's Patty. On this slide regarding the shifts this year and the refusal of services. What will happen in the summer? For the twelve that are likely to return or the thirteen combined, will they be reevaluated? Related to their IEPs or whatever their, their system is. For their class year, their developmental level, how, how do you look at that or? If without the services support.
So we'll, we would treat that like we would any other kiddo that homeschooled for a year or two, likely they go into their. Age appropriate area. If they're out for a year, depending on where they are in the cycle for evaluation. We would evaluate them if, if it was time for their three-year evaluation. Otherwise, we would do screenings, supports, the same thing we would do. We'll typically probably do with almost all students to get a baseline and, and move forward. And in, yeah, any of those, we do have a couple that I think will be coming back even for summer that we're trying to put some summer things together to get them prepared, to get back in buildings and. I'm happy to do that for anybody that wants to, to work on transitioning back in whenever that's. Feasible for their families.
Questions?
Just a quick one. Hi Jen, it's Lisa. I just wanted to ask the five new hi, the, the five new IEP. One-on-ones, are those new hires? Are those already allocated in the budget? Like, how does that work if you need five? New full-time one-on-one people?
So our, we're budgeted for fifty overall associates throughout the district next year. And right now I'm close to needing fifty-one, so we get creative. Some of them are new hires, but some, that, some of that is. Openings that I've had all year and not been able to fill frankly. So I'm super hopeful that as COVID continues to kind of shift and people. Are more interested in getting back into a public setting that we're able to fill the positions, but they are, for the most part, they're. Positions that were student specific. And when students left us, we had positions for them and we anticipate they'll come back and we're, we will be prepared for them to come back. Some of them are already still, already working. I think I have two, two maybe openings still that I haven't been able to fill this school year.
Thank you. You did a great job with the presentation.
Thank you. I just have to say I, I very much appreciate Nick fixing the, the sound for me. For when I gave my presentation. I, and, and also the visuals have been great. The camera's going from person to person. It's, thanks Nick.
I have a couple of questions. I need a percent identified by district. We have. Have us at about fifteen point one percent identified. Is that trending up, down?
Oh Charlie, I don't know. I would say it's probably really close. Our numbers. Have been in the, the two forties, two forty to two sixty range. And when we take into consideration the number of kids that. Refused, I think it's probably really close to what it's been. I think we typically are right in the fifteen, fourteen, fifteen range. But I can find more information on that for you.
Now, if I look at the IEPs by grade. And I see that the number of students on IEPs decreases over time. Is that typical, number one? And number two, does that, is that indicative of students who. Are on IEPs but are able to be off of them because of the progress that they've made?
I think our, it's a hope that you have higher early supports and services and that they decline over, over the years. And it's a hope that kids are given enough tools. That they are able to access what they need without the, the direct support and individualized teaching. So. I guess yes to both. Would be my hypothesis. I will say I appreciate the opportunity to put all of this together because I've never looked at it exactly like this. And now that we have this, we can do this periodically and see if it's a trend and see how we're doing.
Great. Okay, that's all I have. Nobody has anything else? Thank you Jen, we certainly appreciate it.
I was just pulling up the percent of. Out of. Districts. Over years. In two thousand sixteen, we were at fifteen percent. This, and the state average was fifteen. In two thousand eighteen, we were at sixteen percent. I think it's, or fourteen percent were. I think it's pretty general.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm going to kick you back to a regular attendee now Jen.
Cool, thanks.
Have a good night.
Okay, let's move on to action items. The twenty twenty-one school district calendar.
Well, so thank you for approving a robust learning calendar for our. Kids and staff. Last time, it was interesting, the question came out, I think it was from the public member.
And I think it, and maybe it was Patty, like wow, wow, it seems like we're going so late. And I'm thinking, well, that, you know, depending on what the.
Calendar is around the December timeframe and so forth, that can also push things around. I, as I'm. Looked at that afterwards, I'm like, no, I have the same question now. So we double counted and everything and found out that we had approved a one hundred eighty-day. Calendar as opposed to a one hundred seventy-seven day. Now, one hundred eighty is typical, but that is not what we have in our agreement. But that is not what we have in our um agreements. So the one hundred seventy-seven is what we need. So I brought this back to. Um, meeting with the J R E A because they have employees and how this gets structured. And so and when I say J R A was Jerry leadership team, I think it was the first Wednesday or the seventh, whatever April seventh was. It was a Wednesday anyway. And they came up with a solution that they, I think they all agreed upon, which was. To take two days away from the end. Um, the reason why not all three days at the end is because then you're coming back for your last day on a Monday and that didn't feel good. Um, assuming, of course, you know, we don't have any additional days and and all that. But then by removes us two of the days taken care of. And then to get the other one, they felt that putting an additional vacation day on the twenty-second of December. That would account for the three days. They felt staff would appreciate the. Uh, ability to travel during the timeframe. And that's not necessarily atypical from what we've done in the past. Uh, the only other change here is the graduation date proposal, which would be the Friday prior to that last day. Um, because do the do it at the Friday afterwards. Well, it's several days after it's all been done. And we think that's in the, it's in the good timeframe and what we're allowed to do from the state level.
So it's all Patty's fault that the seniors graduated weekly.
No, I think it's that the community uh helped see, helped us see something that we didn't already see. So I retract my second motion, Charlie's motion from last week. Which I so enthusiastically gave, I retract that.
So we made a mistake, we made a mistake internally.
So the seniors' last day would still be their graduation day, was that, that was part of the conversation, right? That the seniors' last day now would be June tenth, if that's the thing. And then every other student would be coming back thirteen, fourteenth, is that?
And so um.
So is there any?
We think that works.
Any more discussion? Motion?
I'll move to accept the amended calendar.
The motion by Lisa, second by Patty. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, motion carries five zero zero. Okay. Brings us to district copiers.
So Mike is here tonight and while you. Uh, just a note on this, when we went, when we were talking at the. During the budget cycle, we were saying, where can we remove funds from this year and be able to purchase? In advance if need be, or um. You know, what could we do? Copiers was one of those conversations. Uh. In the motion, however, that was made, it was made. And copiers was not included in that motion. Um, maybe because not everyone was on board with that, that's a very good possibility. Um, maybe we just. Let it go by, we talked about Chromebooks and we talked about the telephone system and so forth, getting that all situated this year, which is all. Planned for April break, I think the phone systems we put into the elementary schools, the new ones that will be tied in with the phone system here. Um, so we still had this copier issue. And we didn't budget for copiers for next year because we took that out of the budget with the intent, of course, to. Get some during this cycle right here. But didn't have the approval to go forward to do so. So we, it actually gave us a little bit of time to look at what would be the best possibility. Um, and so Mike's going to give some thoughts. And, you know, we can act, we can not act, we can act in part. Um, but feel free to ask a lot of questions and uh it's an exciting topic. It's it's a incredibly necessary topic, so.
Well, while it wasn't on the agenda, the board should have received, I believe, late last week, a budget transfer that if. There's a decision to move forward, that should be worked into.
Well, it's not on the agenda tonight.
It it's not specifically attached just because we didn't put it on the consent agenda because there was the discussion here, so.
Oh, that's right. So we would need to add that to.
It would have to be a part of this motion.
That's right. Yeah, we didn't put it on because it wasn't a done deal.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ruben. Um. So yeah, like Rupert said, we've started to look at copiers and what the district currently has. Um, come up with some goals and some future planning to move forward the copiers because they are a big item. Uh, right now, the district currently has nineteen copiers across the district with ages ranging from five to ten years. Um, we yearly support is about thirty-four thousand dollars on all of those. And the average lifespan of a copier is somewhere around five years. So a lot of ours are getting towards um that five-year mark with uh, we have eight copiers in ten-plus years. Uh, with the cost of supporting them rising every year. So recently, we evaluated the copier location, uh, we've looked at the usage of them and through discussion have come up with a plan. To reduce the overall number of copiers to about fifteen. We want to upgrade the oldest copiers first and continue to upgrade the older ones and evaluate needs as we move on. We may not need fifteen moving forward, but fifteen right now is a pretty good number compared to nineteen we currently have. Um, one of our goal would be to reduce overall usage. Um, and by color, by reducing the support, by reducing the number of copies made, uh, support will decrease over time. The plan for this year was after looking at the usage and where they're currently located, would remove four copiers in total, uh, two from the high school. The one from each elementary school. And in doing so, we'd also upgrade six of the oldest copiers, which are three in the RMS, two of the grade school and one of the high school. The cost of purchase six copiers outright is sixty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars. But if we take those current six copiers. And we compare the six we have right now, our annual support on the six we'd be getting rid of is twenty thousand. And the um estimated support for six upgraded, one of the eleven thousand, that'd be a nine thousand dollar a year support um decrease. The support is um toner, drums, unit. And the software the district currently use is to to support like um copiers. Which is paper cup, which we can also use uh to help cut down on copying and make sure it's being used where necessary. And then moving forward, we have fifteen copiers, or six upgraded this year. And then next year, we start to budget um for three copiers a year. And replacing the following copiers. Um, if we place three a year by twenty-four, twenty-five school year, all the copiers would be five years old. At which point we continue to work on reducing paper and keep looking at our current need for copying. How about any questions?
Uh, yeah, you said uh budget three per year, is there one in the budget for next year?
No, we'd start budgeting next year.
For the following year.
Yeah, correct. Next, next budget year is when we we start budgeting for them.
I guess I have a question. Right now, we're looking at surplus of one point four.
Yeah, finances are as follows, one point four is the latest number that I have from Carrie. I got that last week, or she. Um, went out for this week. And the, so to give you numbers, so bigger picture. The, on the May seventh, we'll close off P O's, so um. Within the next couple of months, we'll have a better understanding, it could be. You know, we could be at one point five, we could be at one point three and a half, something around there, you know, it's it's in that area. Um, because there'll be, you know, we'll close off P O's that. Aren't going to be utilized or we need to, you know, make sure we get the P O's in to still do some work over the next couple of months, so. Money will be spent there certainly. So one point four, uh, the cost items on tonight's agenda. One has to do with something that we talked about at the facilities committee about a maintenance truck. Um, so you can, that's around the forty thousand dollar mark, forty-two thousand. Um, the transfer that would be needed is for a couple of different items.
But that's in the budget, you're transferring from one item to the other line in the budget.
Yes, correct.
So that's in the budget.
That is in the budget, that money is in the budget, that's correct.
Reduce the surplus.
Yeah. You said wouldn't reduce or would?
Would reduce.
It would reduce it, so yes, so it would reduce the surplus. So then this right here, if you were to do this, this would also reduce that surplus. So if you were to do both of those, that would be about a now one point three million dollar surplus. You're also have, if if you were to do the copiers and the truck.
It's a hundred and fifty K. Fifty K for the truck, a hundred K for the copies.
Sixty-four thousand for the copiers.
Yes, sixty-four thousand for the copies.
The service and supplies, we're about to address the numbers, Mike.
No, they're, he's saying by getting those, you would, you end up saving nine thousand dollars next year in service. Funds.
Right, so it'd be seventy-five thousand for the copy or purchase and the service, yeah.
We've budgeted, our cut, this, the the service contract would come out of our current, like, we've been budgeting for a service contract. It'll actually be lower next year by adding, by replacing six copiers. That sixty-four thousand is what it will cost to buy the copiers. The service contract was already budgeted for next year and will be lower.
So it's sixty-four for this year period, because that's what we're talking about, it's year-end spending, right?
That's right.
Right.
Okay, so I guess sixty-four. And then that's uh forty-seven or something like.
Something like that, yeah, forty-seven for the two items.
So we're talking. Hundred and fifteen.
So then the warrants were passed earlier this year in March. Which would send five hundred thousand dollars if it was available, which it will be. To the uh for the purpose of paving within the maintenance reserve trust fund. Twenty-five thousand would also up to twenty-five thousand, but in this case it will be twenty-five thousand, because it's there. Would be shifted to the student services or special ed trust fund. Uh, giving that balance about four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in it. Or the cost of approximately a couple out of district placements. The. Other. Items that we talk about on a annual basis from a financial standpoint that are big ticket items. Is when do we? Wish to um pay out retirement benefits for teachers? So it's uh currently budgeted for next year, so we can do that. Um, the item, sometimes we, well, in the past two years, at least, we have paid them in with surplus funds ahead of time. Uh, which gives you then a buffer for the following year. Next year, we might have costs that uh, you know, will pop up. Uh, due to whatever other items are going on with continued COVID or or something to that effect. Something to think about, the the bigger reason, if we were to do that this year, is probably because of the change in retirement rates. Um, you say you spend less by doing it this year than you do next year. Um, by several thousand dollars. Um, that being said, the, it's a big ticket item. It's gonna be two and a half, I mean, it's gonna be a quarter of a million dollars, you know, to pay out those retirement benefits. Um, maybe closer to two sixty. I believe you approved a. Did we approve a? Retirement tonight? Do we have that? Just in case, if if do we add it to the agenda, the consent agenda is my question.
No.
Yeah, I don't.
No, it's not like a side.
No, I think.
Yeah, we received a retirement note today. Um, very nice letter, but uh the person wanting to. Call this the last year, so that would be. Um, Deb Martin, if we want to put that on, you know, if we want to take a separate vote on that one, you know.
Separate vote on.
Accepting her retirement.
So there were, there were some documents that were sent to the board.
Very, yeah.
Yeah, you had the uh, so you guys had made a motion on the transfers, you had made a motion on the. Um.
Right.
The new hire.
The new hire.
Yep.
Um, I don't think you guys added that resignation letter, I mean, that retirement letter.
We don't have to add it to the consent agenda, we something just.
Yeah, you can still.
You don't have, it doesn't have to be on the consent agenda. So with all those funds, knowing where you want to end up with a surplus to give back to taxpayers, it's, you know, it's important to think about.
Okay, so that leaves the one point four, does that include the four hundred and? Ball or whatever it is that we have in emergency fund?
No, I don't believe so.
Because actually what we're gonna end up with is one point eight. Decide where it goes.
Yeah, well, close, yeah, exactly, it's closer to two, yeah. But that's because we've been carrying, yeah, carrying those funds over. And we also have, yeah, we have to have to five percent now that we're allowed to carry over.
Right.
Should we want to?
Okay. I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question about copiers? I think that's what we're talking about.
Of course, yes.
So Mike, just for my own identification, so copiers equals printers, right? So for the most part, people are print, if they're printing at all, because they're not, they're using technology for the most part. If they do print, they're using copiers to print, the copy printers, not. We don't, I mean, there's, or are there also printers throughout the, throughout the district?
All copiers.
They're all copy, so so for the uninformed.
Yep.
Thank you.
You wouldn't have to have a page count, would you, Mike?
Um, off the top of my head, no, but that information can be gotten.
We did, we did actually look at the data on the page counts for each of the schools and each of the copiers. And the rationale for reducing the number of copiers was in part. Um, one, due to, you know, saving over years of of purchasing or instead of leasing. But also because we have some that aren't working fantastically anyway, so they're not being utilized. So, um, you know, some of them have like two thousand copies a year. Um, and that's, that's foolish to have a machine that that does that. On the other hand, some of the goals that Mike is talking about with reducing color and so forth, we have very specific. Um, data on where our overages are, because if you, I think, Mike, you talked about, make sure I'm not incorrect. When we do the service agreement, that includes the ink, am I correct?
Correct, yes.
And so if you use a lot of colored ink, that changes. You know, what you end up having to pay for down the road as you go overboard. And we do have approximately, would you say, nine thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand dollars in overages annually?
We do, yes, the bulk of it is color, but as correct, yes.
Yeah, because of due to color printing. And so we have set some goals and we'll be sending some stricter guidelines on that. So not only, but I think we'll have more efficient copiers if we get some new ones.
I think a few years ago, uh. We did a calculation, it came out to about five pages per student per day. And took the number of copies and divided by the number of school days and the number of students.
Mm-hmm.
And I wonder what it would be now, if we've done anything to reduce it.
Yeah, it'd be good to, we could take a look at that. Uh, Mike, did you hear what Charlie said?
I vaguely have something about number of pages per day divided by student, I think you said.
Number of pages per student. Each day times the number, times one seventy-seven.
Okay. I want to say, if I can look real quick, I feel like we're averaging somewhere. In the five, ten thousand pages a day, maybe.
Okay, so we're above that. So we've increased usage.
And we should be reducing usage.
Yes, okay, yeah. So if we're at five thousand, then maybe we're we're lower than that, but if we're at ten thousand a day, then we're definitely higher.
It's a lot of paper.
Uh, yeah, do you, yes, today's about eighteen thousand pages we printed today.
Eighteen thousand, what's our enrollment?
Current enrollment, twelve hundred.
Mike, I just want to say thank you for this analysis and for bringing us a proposal that's so progressive and it sounds good to me.
Well, thank you. And back to Ruben's point of looking at, again, the copiers are big, that would be removed, are, they cost too much to support where they're currently being located, and the usage doesn't support paying for a support contract on these copiers that sit in parts of buildings that aren't being utilized.
Okay, just a comment, we need to do something to get the, the usage down.
Well, I, I'll comment on that. I know at the Monad Lake District, there's a lot of people due to COVID that paper has increased because technology, even though the kids are home a great deal more, technology is very intermittent and inequitable. And a lot of teachers, especially in the younger grades, have needed to rely upon paper to go home, to come back, to be able to assess and be able to get the work done. So I, I think before we say this year and just look at this year's numbers, it would probably be helpful to see a norm from other years. I think, I think this year is exceptional on many levels. And some things are going to be excessive because we've had to make do in ways that we might not normally.
I think this point will take. I was just reacting to Nick saying that today, at 18,000 pages, so today is not a remote day or anything. Anyway.
Now, if that's 18,000 pages to this planning for the entire week, that's, that would be better, right?
It would be.
Well, no. Where, where we saw in the data, I think we're high all around, and I think we have been high all around. Interesting enough, the, when adding Chromebooks, we thought, oh, that will take care of paper. Actually, it may not have, and kind of increased. What we've done here at a board level and what we've modeled has been nothing but fantastic. I mean, you can even, Nick can even talk to the hours saved and the, of course, there's money there in hours, people time, but also just the amount of money they save with printing and so forth. So we've more than paid for our technology here. That's, that's not been an issue. But doing that in the rest of the schools in the district is a tougher thing and something that we need to plan for. But we did notice regardless of a surge perhaps due to, you know, this year, the number of colored pages in certain places is, is a little, is a little disconcerting.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? Right. Is there any, does anyone, Mike, want to make a motion?
Is this motion including all of the budget transfer, the money things we talked about? Copier, I heard mention of truck, I heard mention of.
The truck has already been covered in the.
The transfer in the, was in the consent agenda for the, for the truck. And the reason for that one is, it's, it is the better economic thing to do, even though it wasn't budgeted, which is, which, you know, I think we took a risk thinking that the work that was done last year would pan out, and that was not the case. It's double the cost this time around. And so that's not a good pattern, not to get into. So I think that was, I think that's a good move.
So I would say that the purchase of the new copier seems to be a reasonable thing to do. And I would, I was, of course, I would make a motion to approve the 65,000, 64, 85 to fire the copiers.
So the, to transfer.
Transfer.
And to, yeah, and to acquire.
A second.
Motion by John, second by Lisa. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, opposed? Motion carries 500. Did you want to add the retirement right now?
I will move to accept Bev Martin's retirement.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept Beverly Martin's.
Yeah, I can make, I can make a comment. It's been really fun to see Bev's work this year. It's her first, unfortunately, her, her last year of doing the fax middle school all the way through. And I think that she's had a great time. There's been some, she has items on display. There's been some really nice work that has displayed some very good critical thinking and problem solving with sewing. Interestingly enough, you know, choosing of fabrics and how to solve some, so it's been really, I, you know, I think if you were, if she were here, she would say she's really enjoyed this year from that standpoint, having to have the diversity of students. And I think that's, so it's a nice way to go out.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries 500. Okay, policy review first reading is the JLCF Wellness and Nutrition. We'll make changes based on the input from Heidi and Leanne. You can review those at your discretion. Second reading, we have a bunch of policies. Is there any discussion? Okay, do we have a motion? Do them all at once? I can't make a motion, so.
I, I make a motion that we accept all of the DAF administrative, Administration of Federal Brands, DJE bidding requirements, EBPP indoor air quality and FAC indoor air quality program policies.
Thank you, Patty. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. There are a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 500. Okay, Board Committee updates. Facilities Committee update. Ruben gave a fairly good one. Do you have anything to add, John?
I would say that Ruben gave a, a good update and covered most of what's urgent now, so. Unless you have anything else, but, okay, the one item, Ruben, you mentioned the establishment of a building committee. I know that that involves finding people from the community, and that's always a little bit complicated. Do you have any thoughts on when that might happen?
First, so, yeah, well, the first thing is, well, the first meeting's gotta be in early May. So not right after vacation, but probably the week following, maybe. That's if we can get, you know, the people to do so, maybe it'll be mid-May, but May is definitely the target. So we'll work on a survey that can be sent out in a more, you know, broader email for tomorrow, just to kind of update things on school board and other items that are maybe happening in the district. So that will, that will go to a specific population of people. One, it will go to the staff, and two, it will go to families within the community. I do already have some people who are interested in this that have been sent my way, who have served on other committees that we've had. So they'll get invites, and so you might have, as board members, people that you think would be good to serve on a committee like that, that are more from perhaps the community. Less so having to do, you know, people who are more interested in perhaps looking at things from a financial outlook. Other people that I have are there who want to look maybe through it as a efficiency or craftsmanship outlook. So you'll want different types of minds and different types of eyes, eyes on that and, and different reasons for being on it. You know, I, I hate having large committees, but I don't see a way, if we're gonna do this one, to have something too small. Which, that's okay. Because if we want to come together and regain some consensus, then we want to have a group of people that can also formulate how to communicate and to promote. Or say we agree that this is not a way to go, but we shouldn't do this right now, this is not a good idea. And go with that and be, and be satisfied with that decision. But we are just getting in the data to make a committee worthwhile. Beforehand, we'd just be talking about nothing. Just talking about ideas without pictures. Now, now there comes, we have that stuff.
I was gonna say, the advantage I would see would be families who are, you know, students who are in fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, you gotta think ahead of where your kids are gonna be in six years or five years, and what would you want this campus to be, and what would you like your facilities to have? And if you think with the long range view, and I'm gonna play the strength of this being 150 years coming to high school, right, and so that many more years ago, someone said, we need to, to think ahead of what our kids are gonna need. And so that's what our families need to do now, is to think positively about the future and identify what we need to be. It'll be too late for my son, but it will be terrific for some other families as they go forward. And that doesn't mean that I wouldn't invest my time in it. I'd love to be on a committee that really puts the kids ahead.
Thank you, Patty. Anything else? Nick?
Just a quick Communication Committee update. We will be meeting tomorrow. The primary goal of that meeting is to start reviewing our communication plan, which was implemented about two years ago. We're at a point where we have kind of finished this cycle. It seemed like it was planned for about two years. So we will meet to review the plan, and then we'll have another meeting, hopefully within a month or so, to start actually planning some new goals and action steps. I guess, first things, I guess another quick point is just obviously, hopefully, everybody's enjoying the audio quality a little bit better in the video presentation. This is our first meeting of using our new streaming equipment, so kind of a little bit of a different layout. I know that the board members are obviously looking at me kind of peeking out behind equipment. Guess if I can do this just real quick. This is kind of everything that we're looking at right now. So just a lot of different stuff. And hopefully, again, we're getting a superior audio quality for everybody. So this commitment, this, we'll have a lot more applications, be very student focused, hopefully next year. The goal is over the summer to really try to understand this technology, to try to find some folks within the staff and school community that are interested in maybe learning more about it, so that there could be applications again for students for presentations, you know. Do we still have any sort of remote components as we're going down the line, things like assemblies and things like that? You can work this type of equipment in. So that's kind of the big exciting thing. So that's the Communication update.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you, Nick. Now we're into public comments, too. So does our public have any comments to make tonight?
All right, so I am back. Just to give a quick explainer. Again, first name, last name, town of residence. We do already have a couple of people lined up to speak. So I will start off with Ms. Harding.
Hi there. I'm Erica Harding. Jeffrey, also a teacher at the middle school. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the, the copier situation. I know you already voted to move that through. I just would hope that in removing two copiers from the high school, middle school, that the ones that are left would be equitably placed with folks up on the third floor in the middle school trying to get over to the high school during the day, it's, it's kind of impossible. And then also to comment on copy numbers, I think a lot of us, I shouldn't say that, I know for myself, I've tried to do less with the Chromebooks when we are in person, to try to alleviate some of that screen time. And also, I know today, a lot of us in the middle high school were printing out copies of the new schedule, since this is our, was our first day with our new schedules with the five-day week. Thank you.
Thank you. I took notes on that. Thank you.
All right. Were you gonna say something, Charlie?
No, do we have anybody else?
Oh, yeah, we do have one more person. Allison Mahar, I believe. Please tell me if that name's wrong, or I said it wrong.
Can you hear me, Nick?
Uh, yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. It's Mar. That's okay. Hi, guys. I also wanted to chat about the copiers. Allison Mar from Ringe, also a teacher at Ringe Memorial. It's a hot topic for all of us. And Charlie, I was just hoping to clarify some things for, for us elementary folks, too. Mike, I really appreciate all of your hard work on that presentation, too. I know for us, at least at our school, we feel like a lot of times, we sometimes end up creating more copies because the copiers just don't work the way we expect them to. Sometimes we end up with ink or they get jammed, and that sometimes creates some additional copies. And then I know for us, a lot of us chose not to get the workbooks for the new math program. So I know, like, for example, today for the lesson I taught in kindergarten, there were already four worksheets for just the, each kiddo, for each one of our, our lesson today. So I hope that helps clarify just a little bit what we might be using in the elementary.
Thank you, Allison.
Absolutely. And thank you. We really appreciate it, and your copiers.
Do we have anything else? Anybody else?
No, that is everybody I have.
Okay, I want to thank everybody who made comments. Do we have any board matters? Board matters, future items, we still have an update on a technology plan? Okay, and do I have a motion? John?
A motion to adjourn?
Lisa made a motion to adjourn. John's second. Favor? Opposed, motion carries 500. Thank you, everyone.